For today's town hall, Congresswoman will talk about wins for the community. An update on asylum seekers in NYC and her goals for legislating in a Republican-led House. We will then open it up to Q and A from constituents. Please keep your questions limited to one minute to allow us to get to as many questions as possible. For any questions we can't address, our staff will be available afterwards to assist. I now invite Assemblyman Michael 82nd Assembly District to briefly address the audience.
I'm just very, very glad the Congresswoman is here to find out what's on your mind and willing to talk to us to see what's on her mind. So let's sit back, let's enjoy, and thank you, Congresswoman.
Thank you so much for joining us today, Assemblyman. I now invite Representative Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez to give her remarks.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We're so excited. This is our first ever official congressional town hall in Co-op City since we have redistricting. So welcome, everybody. We're so excited. So for those of you who may or may not know, in the last year, we went through a redistricting process. So after the census, all the congressional and this at Co-op City was formerly in Representative Jamal Bowman's office. And we are so incredibly excited to have done this. So thank you. Thank you. Let Congresswoman continue her speech. We're going to write here, and everyone has the complete right to political expression. And so, you know, it is a welcome and active part of our civic life. So thank you all so much, and I'm happy to speak to some of those points that were raised there towards the end when we get to our Q and A. But thank you again, everybody, for joining us. Everybody for joining us. We appreciate it. And so, once again, this is our first town hall. And so, as of about two weeks ago, Co-op City is now officially part of New York's 14th congressional district. So we're very excited about that. So two weeks ago was the official handoff from Representative Jamal Bowman to myself. And we're really looking forward to kicking this off really strong. And that's why we decided that our very first town hall was going to be right here in Co-op City. So every member of Congress does things a little bit differently, so we'll also kind of catch you up to speed. For me and my office, we try to do a town hall once per month in our congressional district. So that is our commitment. That's what we do. Once a month, we try to switch up the locations of it so that we can be close to everybody. Everybody has a shot. Our new congressional district, it has both parts of the Bronx and parts of Queens. So sometimes we will try to flip between the boroughs. You know, one month we'll have a location in Queens, another month we'll have a location in the Bronx. In our new congressional district, we have Co-op City. We have areas like Parkchester, City Island, Throcksnec, Soundview, and Hans Point, as well as some other areas in the Bronx as well. On the Queens side, we've got Astoria, Corona, East Elmhurst, including LaGuardia Airport, and Dittmar's, about half of Jackson Heights. So those are all the communities roughly that make up New York 14. Now, I want to jump in right ahead. And we also, in case you don't know, we actually just opened up a permanent office here in Co-op City on this floor around the corner. It's where Congressman Jamal Bowman's office used to be. So if you've visited there before, you can just go straight to the same spot. But if you've never been, it's Room 3 right here on this floor. And a lot of people don't know what your member of Congress can actually help you with. They think that a lot of what we do is legislating and doing bills and oversight letters in the House, which is true. But a lot of people don't know that your member of Congress, any member of Congress, can help you with Social Security issues. We can help you with VA issues, with Medicare issues, with immigration issues. Basically, if you have any issue with a federal agency or a federal program, we can help you out with that. And so, we have been able to get tens of thousands of dollars back to certain people from Social Security with their checks being held up. We've been able to modify discharges for veterans in order for them to gain greater access to VA services. Know that there's a lot of ways that we can help you out. And if any of you happen to be taking a vacation or a day, you know, a long weekend in Washington DC, we can also do things like help facilitate White House tours, Capitol Hill tours, and things like that. So there's a lot of ways that we can help you on a granular level. But let's start off with one of the most recent updates that we got, which is our wins for the community. Two days before Christmas, the House passed legislation which included $16 million in community project funds that our office has been able to secure for our community here in the Bronx and Queens. So we're really excited. I'm going to dive in and share with you some of what those wins are. But since this was from the last congressional term, the wins, some of the wins for Co-op City were done through Jamal Bowman's office. So we'll give you a quick update on what he was able to secure and what he's done with Co-op City. And then what we're going to be, what we're going to be doing in that handoff is overseeing the implementation of what he secured to make sure that that handoff is nice and smooth. So the first thing that we did was that we secured in our first round of community project funds. We've done two of these. We got $7 million for 10 projects. And but this round, we secured 15 million, 15 community projects for $16 million. So we've been able to like really step up in this new round. One of the things that we did most closely was that we secured an additional $825,000 to Jacoby Hospital for our Stand Up To Violence program. So we're really excited about that. We strongly believe that community safety is a holistic effort. It's not just about focusing on that young people get into trouble when they don't have, you know, enough educational opportunities and parents don't have secure economic situations. And that also, you know, we really need investments in mentorship. So we first seeded some funds to the Stand Up To Violence program in our first round. And with the second round, that has brought a total of $1.2 million to Jacoby Hospital for the Stand Up To Violence program. And I want to tell you about what that means. We do things in this program that some people might say, "This is a little strange. Why would we take this kind of approach?" But what we have found is that it's actually highly successful. So in Jacoby Hospital, we have some amazing, we have some amazing folks who are doing a lot of study and work on how we actually, how we actually reduce violence in communities. How do we actually stop reoccurrence of crime? And what they decided to do was come to some of our local leaders and some of our local governments in the Bronx, and they say, "Just let us do a study. Let us do, just give us a chance to do a very small group of people." And what they decided to do is they said, "What if we took the response to a violent incident?" Right now, the nexus of that response is a police precinct, right? Something people may get arrested, people get brought to the precinct, you process things, you figure things just a small cohort of people. And when someone gets hurt, you not only go to a precinct, but you go to a hospital. And they said, "What would happen if we made that nexus of the response the hospital?" So they said, "Just if you just give us a small testing group, let us, let us try to make that response there, and let's just see what happens." This started happening several years ago. And so, here's what we did. Whenever anybody gets to Jacoby Hospital and is admitted for an injury that is associated with violence, a stabbing, a gunshot wound, domestic violence, things like that, what happens is that they get flagged at the hospital. You get your ER doctor and you get, you know, your physical care doctor. But then they automatically flag that person for psychological intervention. They bring in a social worker. They bring in people to start asking about your housing. And especially what we've seen during COVID is that there has been a mental health crisis in general, but particularly with young people. And, and yes, thank you. And, and what they said was like, "When we see some of these incidents of rising crime and violence, we have to dig into those numbers. Where is it happening? Who was involved in these incidents?" And what we're seeing is that it was overwhelmingly young people. It was young men in particular. And so what we decided to do with some of these folks is that we said, "We're going to bring in mentors." And so, we actually have done is that in this program, have had experiences on Rikers Island, who have then turned their own life around since. And we hired them. And we said, "You know, there is no better expert on how to reach these kids than someone who" themselves out. That is a skill. That is a worthwhile, valuable skill. They have knowledge and expertise that nobody else has. So let's compensate them for it. And so, we hired mentors in the Stand Up To Violence program. They hired people that had, that had been in Rikers before to mentor these kids to not walk through the path that they had walked through in the past. And what we found is that initially, and then scaled with that 1.2 occurrence of violence by that population went down by over 59% in our community. The folks at Jacoby and this community of social workers and physicians have found one of the most effective ways, the most, one of the most effective clinically studied ways to actually reduce crime and violence. Evidence-backed, clinically studied, we know how to solve this issue. We know one of the keys in solving this issue. So one of the top things that we did was secure almost an additional, an additional $1 million, $825,000 to Jacoby. We can go from that small cohort to much larger groups of people who are coming in. And it has been very that we're hoping that during this time, especially after COVID, when we started seeing those surges, that they start to level out in a lot of different ways. And so, we're very excited about that. Of course, there's no one solution to this issue. We, a big part of this is getting guns off of streets. It's about closing that iron pipeline where folks are trafficking guns from states that have lax gun laws and bringing them to New York. So we've been doing a lot of work on that as well. Some other things that we did was that we also secured $1 million towards pedestrian safety improvements on that intersection of Westchester Square and East Tremont Avenue. So if you've ever commuted or taken the bus, that, that intersection there on Westchester Square is really dangerous. It's really dangerous to cross the street. It, you know, and, and it's a, it's a bus hub, it's a subway hub. There are so many pedestrians and people have gotten hurt. So what we've done is that we secured $1 million in federal funds to help start overhauling that whole area. And so, we're going to be extending curbs. We're curbs, we're hoping to beautify the area. We're hoping to install crosswalks and generally make it safer. So those secures, those funds were also secured there. We're very excited about that. In addition to $3 million in green energy job, in green job investments across the state of New York. And so, these hires are also specifically for young people. They're going to hire, these are $3 million towards job and wage subsidies for 16 to 24-year-olds, as well as transitioning fossil fuel workers and, or those from low-income communities for clean energy positions. And that, we're hoping, is going to link up with an education program that we secured in Throcksnec to help train people into developing and learning how to build those underwater pylons that offshore wind gets built on, which is really good union, high-paying, dignified jobs that we're bringing right here to Throcksnec. And they're going to be taught through SUNY Maritime right there. So public education, good jobs, union, high wage, as well as the money to actually hire those folks in our community. So we're really, really excited about that. And so, those are just some of the projects that we secured. You can look up the rest of them on our website, but we felt that those were some of the key ones to flag that would, that are very relevant right here to Co-op City. Jamal Bowman also secured funding for, to, to expand that green space. Right now, um, let me see right here, at 2049 Barto Avenue, there's, there's a big unused strip of waterfront land, and it's highly polluted. So Jamal Bowman secured half a million dollars to completely restore and revitalize that, you know, that whole strip of land so that it can become a green space that our community can enjoy. So that was just secured. That process is going on, and we're going to make sure that that gets moved along and that it doesn't, that none of that falls through the cracks. So we're really excited about that. And so, we'll go to the next slide. A big question that folks were putting in here was, "We have a Republican majority. What can we do with that?" So I wanted to say that our two main points that we're doing here. The first one is that Republicans have put a laser focus in trying to promote cuts to social spending programs. We're talking about welfare. We're talking about Medicare. We're talking about Social Security, EBT. It's horrible. And what they're trying to do is weaponize something known as the debt ceiling in order to secure that. And so, with the debt ceiling, the way that the debt ceiling works is that every year, the US federal government passes a budget, and we authorize spending. Or we'll authorize, in Republicans' case, tax cuts. Store, and you put everything in your cart, and you get in line, and the cashier rins you up, and you hand over your card. You've already done all that, right? And the cashier swipes your card, and then you have that two seconds before it's approved or declined, right? Basically, what the debt ceiling is, is that moment after you swipe it and the bank says Congress authorizes almost like that credit limit in a way. We authorize to, to raise your credit limit. And so, the problem that with what Republicans are doing is that if they don't want our debt ceiling to go up, then they shouldn't authorize what they are doing in the first place. And that doesn't mean don't authorize Social Security, don't authorize Medicare. Because one of the largest contributors to the national debt that we have had in the last three, four years have been what? The Trump tax cuts. The cut, the, the tax breaks for the yachts and the private jets and the oil companies and Big Pharma. And all of these things have added far more to our national debt and to our debt situation than they, than basic essential services like EBT, than our EBT program, or Medicare, Medicaid, et cetera. And so, if they don't want this to go up, they can just dial back those tax cuts. But they don't want to do that. They want to hold the full country hostage. And I, I don't think it, it is very hard to understand how reckless and dangerous this is. Because our debt, the US dollar, is a major part of the American and of the global economy. The US dollar is known as a reserve of the US dollar, the stability of our debt payments, et cetera, is what allows the dollar to be a global reserve currency. If Republicans try to force a default on our debt ceiling, what happens is that the Treasury has to stop, has to stop cutting, they have to stop funding these programs at random. Because the Treasury's not a political actor, right? So it completely randomizes what bills don't get paid, what checks don't get sent. And not only that, but everyone abroad who holds the US dollar as a global reserve currency may now think twice. And so, what they are doing is, what they are playing, the game that they are playing right now is extremely, extremely dangerous. And the effects of this are not partisan. Because this is not going to affect Democrats versus Republicans. This is going to hurt everybody. And what they are trying to do is say, "We're not going to authorize the debt ceiling, and if you want us to, we have to cut, we're going to force you to make these cuts to social programs." But by the way, these folks, they represent seniors too. They represent folks who require Medicare, Medicaid, all of these services as well. And, and so, this is something that is going to be at the top of our agenda right now. Technically, the debt ceiling limit has already been passed, but the Treasury has engaged in a process known as extraordinary measures. So they are able to do some accounting that will extend that timeline until about June. And so, we need to solve this problem before June, or else there could be very, very serious impacts and effects. So right now, you know, I think one of the deals that, that we're going into is that we're two weeks into this, two or three weeks into this new Congress. As you all saw with Week 1, with the selection of Kevin McCarthy, we don't exactly have a smooth, smoothly operating ship here with the majority party. And so, there's going to be a lot of dynamics that we're going to be contending with. But we're hoping with the very narrow margin that Republicans have, that maybe they'll be able, we'll be able to have some Republicans that are, that are, that would be willing to kind of break with some of the more, even more extreme parts of their party, I should say, in order to try to get some things through. So we're still our feet in, what do they say? So we're getting, still going to hear our ski legs, I'll say, on that. Because a lot of what we need to do in the minority is do something known as power mapping, which is like really kind of getting information on how that majority party is structured, where those alliances are, where the frustrations are, to see if we can find common ground on certain things. So the second thing we can also do is offer amendments. And this is something that my office has been pretty successful in, in the past. And a lot of it is appending amendments to major or must-pass legislation that can get us small bits of progress, baby steps here or there. And so, that's a big part of our strategy in this upcoming term. Um, now, to our next thing, I wanted to touch on another issue that a lot of folks have been calling our office about, which is the immigration situation that's been happening here in New York City. For the last couple of months, we have been working and we've been really trying to press the White House on providing work authorizations to people who are arriving here in New York City. And this is very important because with what we are seeing with this busing situation, a lot of the folks who are arriving here want to work. They want to work. And the problem is that our federal government does not allow them to work. And because during that gap, it takes anywhere between six months to a year just to get a work authorization, then we start seeing that these folks have no choice but to rely on public services and support when they feel like they are capable of supporting themselves. And so, once they get this piece of paper, they'll actually be able to start participating in our economy and providing a lot of the labor that we actually very deeply need right now to fill a lot of positions. And so, we've been in a lot of communication with the White House. And for a long time, they were telling us, "You need an act of Congress. Congress needs to do it. Congress needs to pass it." Then a couple of weeks ago, the White House released a proposed rule that included work authorizations. And so, we're like, huh, so you all could have done it. So the problem is that, that, that package, that proposed rule is also appended to very concerned, what we find very concerning cutbacks or almost replications of certain Trump-era asylum policies. Now, right now, it is international law that it is legal to seek asylum, legal asylum, to be a refugee at a border of another country. The United States has been part of that. We have honored that for a long time. What we're currently in conversation with the White House about is that this proposed rule would essentially curtail and provide really serious changes to what has been longstanding international practice and, and US precedent. So what we're trying to do is get those work authorizations and then talk about that other part at another time, since there's some disagreement there. So we're trying to secure those work authorizations. We also were able to secure about $800 million to cities that are receiving, that are, that are receiving some of these populations. And New York City should be receiving a decent chunk of that, given the busing situation and just the horrible ways in which a lot of these folks are being treated and brought over here. So we're hoping to get, to get a lot of progress there with that $800 million and the employment authorizations that have been echoed. The need for that has been echoed by Mayor Adams and so many other folks as well. And lastly, I wanted to move to utility bills and ways that we can get some help there. Right now, the Home Energy Assistance Program, known as HEAT, is a federally funded program that can help low-income homeowners and renters pay for utility and heating bills. So right now, if, if you have received an electric, gas, or heating disconnect notice, or if you know someone that may have received one, you can apply for emergency financial help. You can, you may also qualify if you have just a low supply of heating fuel or a broken boiler or furnace. So there is help available, especially now it's very cold, it's winter time. We want to make sure that we prevent anybody from being in any sort of shut-off situation. Additionally, in the Inflation Reduction Act, there's also a lot of tax credits to help people upgrade appliances and other The rules for them are coming out for you if you are, if you are just in a position where you're considering switching or upgrading your appliances. And we're really excited. We want to make sure that you all have that information. A lot of people have already heard about the EV tax credit. A lot of people have already heard about the EV tax credit. So it's up to seventy-five hundred dollars if you are interested in purchasing an electric vehicle. There's even a credit if you're going, if you are interested in buying a used EV. So there's actually four thousand dollars, up to four thousand dollars in tax credits for you if you buy your EV used. A lot of people have heard about that tax credit. But not a lot of people have heard about the other ones. Um, if you are interested, if you're a homeowner, you know, if you're here in Co-op, that, some of those investments may be a little bit different because they're building-wise. But if you're a homeowner here, like let's say in Throckston or Morris Park, and you're interested in installing solar panels, thirty percent of your costs for buying solar panels or installing them Um, if you are interested, if, if you need to upgrade your furnace, if you need to change your air conditioning unit, we can pay for some of that, um, if you are upgrading to an energy-efficient appliance. And so we want to make sure that you all have that information out there. Um, some people are gonna be buying these anyway, you might as well save some money in your pocket. And then what we are also expecting is some additional rules to be coming out later this year, if you're interested in upgrading your stove or oven. So I know there's all this, you know, drama about gas stoves. Everybody relax, no one's here to take yours away, if you love it, you love it, uh, this, it's all good. But if you are in a position where you're thinking about switching your appliance, uh, to an induction or electric stove, we are anticipating, um, that, that there are going to be tax credits coming out later this year and in coming months to help you afford that too. Because induction, induction stoves are pretty nice, but they're also kind of pricey. Um, and so, say, you know, same goes for certain, certain electric stoves. But if you're interested in it, um, I would just say, you know, hold on for a little bit because you might be able to get some, uh, get some money or rebates on that. So we're excited about that. So that's kind of our updates on there. Um, and then I think we can move to our Q and A. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for your remarks, Congresswoman. Thank you, Renell, from Senator Bailey's office for attending. We will now move to the Q and A portion of the town hall. My colleagues will pass me question slips and I will call in the constituent with the question. My colleague Nicole will pass the microphone to you. The first question is from Jose Silva.
With the new House taking over, is Social Security and Medicare in danger?
So, thank you, you know, thank you for the question. I kind of, we described a little bit earlier on how Republicans are going to attack, use the debt ceiling to try to attack Social Security and Medicare. But the good news here is that thanks to your all's turning out and everyone else in the country turning out, while we have a Republican House, we also have a Democratic Senate and we have a Democratic President of the United States. And I know that so long as we have Democratic Senate and presidency, they are going to be highly, highly committed to protecting Social Security and Medicare, um, from these kinds of cuts. So So, okay, sir, so, so, I mean, here's what I'm saying, here's what I'm saying. So here's So I hear you, I hear you, listen.
No, no! She has, she has to talk for this time, all he's been doing is talking! And all the, I am a dumb guy! You had a fun time to talk! On TV, on Twitter, but you're talking to the citizens, you're angry! Okay, we are sorry! We are disappointed in you and the rest of the state! Please don't give us this! No, I can't, no! Biden is helping it all, he's got you!
I understand, sir. Now, and listen, listen. I, I hear you, sir. And here's the thing, is that I don't think there's any secret here that the President and I have our political differences, okay? But what I will say is that with, uh, with the Dem Senate and, and also you're, despite the fact that Republicans have the majority, their majority is this big, it's really, really, really slim. And they are thinking politically. And when you have, and when you have a margin this big, and I will tell you, you know, my, what I anticipate is that in the House, all two hundred and twelve Democratic votes are gonna be a solid no on cuts to Social Security and Medicare, period. My vote will be a no on any cuts to Social Security, Medicare, WIG, EBT, anything, period. So I can tell you as your Congresswoman, for me, it's an absolutely, I will never, ever, ever allow that and, and work to, to, um, to do everything in my power to not let that happen. Now, what I will say is also politically, this is not an easy move for Republicans to do. And I want to be real about that. They may want to do it, but they internally are very upset that something like that is coming to the floor. Because their most right of the right, right, right wing may be okay with that, but just look right here in New York. We've got, well, first of all, we don't even know if George Santos is gonna finish his term, which is gonna bring them even slimmer, I'm just bring their margin even slimmer. You've got, you've got Westchester County that just swung by very small amounts, that's gonna be tough for a representative in Westchester County to vote to cut Medicare, Social Security, EBT. So it's not as easy as they want it to be. Now Kevin McCarthy's in a tough situation because he's a weak leader, as we saw from the first, he's a weak leader! And he's dramatically weakened after what happened in that first week. Because he made so many promises. Because Kevin McCarthy made so many promises that for lost track of everything that he gave away. And so as a result, it's going to be very hard because he creates a lot of contention within his own caucus, which actually creates opportunities for us. So, so that we just wanna lay, I'm laying out the landscape for you all. And I believe that we're gonna do everything in our power to protect those cuts. Now, they're holding everything hostage, but I'll, I can let you know, you know, I can't, I cannot speak for everybody else, but I can speak for myself. And what I can tell you the way I would ever vote in approval to, to make those cuts and to protect our community. That's it.
The next question is from Paul Horn.
Is the infrastructure bill, I think, supported, especially with Metro North stations being built in the Bronx at this time?
No, I, I appreciate the question and, um, so the question was, why did I vote against the bipartisan infrastructure bill? Uh, Representative Bowman and I both voted against it at the time because we had promises from Democratic leadership that we were going to pass the bipartisan infrastructure law and BBB together. And I'm very supportive, you know, of the investments that were made in the bipartisan infrastructure law. In fact, we fought for a lot of those investments. We offered a lot of those investments, especially the ones in public transit and rail and all of these things. But here was the core issue that we, uh, that we contended with. For me, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things, but for me, a big part of it was NYCHA. Billion doll, thirty to forty billion dollar capital And what has happened is that every year, the federal government is supposed to invest a bit, one, like, small amounts of investments in, in upkeep. And the last twenty to thirty years, they have not little investments have built up into a forty billion dollar capital deficit, and now we've got babies sleeping in bubble jackets, in public housing, we have people that don't have access to heat or hot And we received a promise that both of these things will go together, that they would not leave our people Very last minute, that promise was broken. And I felt that I needed to send a message that they can't be doing that. We cannot continue to do that. Because right now, what we are contending with still is one of the largest land uses uh, in, in, in the city, which is housing for so many people, is falling apart. In addition to that, we have all of those investments in our schools, investments in healthcare, all of that being left behind. And so for us, you know, it's not that I didn't want those things to be passed, but it is that we were given a promise that our communities would not be left behind in that, including investments here in Co-op City. And so in protest of that, we voted no. And now, you know, we fast forward, I think that I still stand by the vote because I believe that that vote created amplified pressure on the administration to start making investments in our communities in other ways. And so with the MTA station stops, all four of them now are in our congressional district. Co-op City, Morris Park, Parkchester, and Hunts of those stations are, are now in our new congressional district, before it was, uh, split up between two to three. And so now that we have these, now that we have these resources committed, I want you to know that we're playing an extremely active role in, uh, in trying to make sure that they are stewarded responsibly. So that's, um, you know, that's, that's basically the story behind that vote. Thank you.
The next question is from Ramon Nevers.
Can you support, uh, legislation that will assist Co-op City in transitioning into a trinity?
Yeah, so, uh, we recently did tours, I, I toured the power plant a couple One of the things that we're trying to do is figure out both some of the immediate steps to assist and also long-term, what the long-term infrastructure investments, uh, are, are going to be necessary. So, you know, in addition to trying to steward some of the investments from the bipartisan infrastructure law, uh, and making sure that we're making the investments necessary to prepare our community for that, uh, the other thing that we want to start looking at right away is how can we steward these community project funds in a way that can also support that transition? So, um, the, the whole process of supporting an electric conversion is a huge undertaking. It's not one that we shy away from, but it's a huge undertaking. So what we're starting to do now is make some of those assessments and then try to figure out, uh, what, what are the short, medium, and long-term steps? So like, short-term, the thing that's easiest for us to, uh, snag investments on is efficiency. So the less of an energy drain each of our microwaves, appliances, you know, the, the more we can make them more energy efficient and, which is why we have these tax credits, right? So that people can, uh, make those upgrades. Then we're, the first thing we're doing is getting the electricity use under control with, uh, upgraded appliances. And then, once we have that brought down, it can make it easier for us to make the larger investments on transitioning, uh, transitioning systems. But this is something that, uh, we're, we're starting to look into, uh, right away, and then as we get, uh, more developments on it, we're happy to, to let you all know our, our progress. Oh, sorry, I think, uh, if you have a question, um, you can bring it here to, to Noreen.
The next question is from Dee Winkley.
Thank you. Yes, uh, this is in reference to the JASIS centers, and I don't know how you can address this, but JASIS centers are in need of more funding if we are to help bridge intergenerational activities and programs with the youth we are investing our time and activities in. How can you help us achieve more funding? Because we, and we need the state-of-the-art technologies and materials to help bridge the intergenerational activity for the youth to come in, so we can have that bridge and help save more lives of those children?
Absolutely, thank you, thank you for that, thank you for that question, it's an excellent find. Um, in fact, uh, heard, a couple of years ago, I introduced not just the overall Green New Deal resolution, but we introduced housing and a Green New Deal for public housing. And in that research, when we developed it, one of the things that we dug into is social programming inside housing. So, uh, whether it's childcare, whether it's, um, you know, elder care, the, when we link generational programming together, it actually has huge outsized health benefits for everybody involved. This, out in Queens, we helped open, uh, the first new affordable housing, uh, uh, building in, I believe, about twenty years for seniors. And what we did was that it's, it's affordable housing for seniors in the building, and in the bottom floor is a childcare facility. And there's also gardening facilities there. And there's very intentionally designed programming where both of these communities interact. And what we find is that it actually yields major health and social benefits for everybody, for the seniors who are involved, the kids, really, their learning is very accelerated. And so what we see is that originally, you know, we saw actually programming like this in public housing, long, long time ago. Public housing would have programs like this, or in other kinds of affordable or large, uh, planned communities. So like, I'm from Parkchester, back in the day, Parkchester used to have programming like this. So I think one of the things that we'll, that we can do is that, uh, we can take a look at community project funds and see if there are ways that we can steer community project funds to programs like those. Now, the thing about community project funds is that we only get about ten to fifteen per year. So I know, given how vibrant Co-op City is, I know there's so many things that we're gonna want to steer, um, steer, uh, investments towards. So maybe one thing that we can do is kind of come together as a community and determine, like, what we want our priorities to be this year, what investments we may want to seek next year. But I think something like that is an excellent candidate and an excellent example of, of strong community project fund, uh, uses. So there's a lot of different programs that are eligible, some are less, but I think that's an excellent example of one of those types of, uh, programming needs that, that we can potentially fund through community project funds. The good thing about that is that when we secure some funds, a lot of times, it, it triggers other, uh, levels of government to be able to add to that investment. So in Queens, we were able to get three million dollars to build a new, um, maternal health wing to address our black and, uh, our, our black and, and people and women of color, uh, maternal health crisis. And so it was three million, which doesn't sound like a lot for a hospital. But then when we secured that seed funding, then we were able to get additional funds on the city council and state level, which raised it to about sixteen million dollars. So now we're getting an entire, an entire, uh, health wing dedicated to reproductive health out there. So just an example of one way that we can just, you know, starting it kind of gets the ball rolling and then it picks up, uh, more investments as well. So I think that's an excellent conversation, uh, that we can have. And we have some of our folks here from the office, if you all can raise your hands. We've got Noreen, we've got Najee, Daniel, Gerardo, they're all here, um, and you can feel free to speak with any one of them about any of your other ideas, uh, as well. Because we're in this planning process of figuring out how we want to go about this for this year. No problem, thank you.
So next question is from Matt Hester.
Uh, thank you. Uh, two quick questions, uh, one for the community and one for my own sanity. Um, I feel we are in the middle of the process of dumbing down our nation, as evidenced, matter of fact, that one side is easily manipulated by the lies of their quote-unquote leadership. of their quote-unquote "leadership" feeds them hourly by social media and by frankly, their lack of education. The easiest people to lead are the least educated among us. And America being ranked 58th in the world in education is quite a tall. My question for the community is when are governments going to start taking education more serious, as serious as our defense spending? Take it serious as our defense spending and increase funds to our soon-to-be-broken education system. My question for my own sanity is if you will be serving on any of these committees to offset the lunacy and circus I expect will come from the Republican-led congressional...
Amen!
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your brilliant efforts to sit down and play Higgins for how you spoke to Ray Seltzer during the fossil fuel hearing. And congratulations on your engagement.
Thank you. Thank you. So I will say this. So committee assignments are not official yet. I anticipate that those assignments should be finalized next week. So I fly back to DC on Tuesday, and I'll be in DC next week. I anticipate when we get there, we're going to have those committee assignments finalized. So I can't say anything for sure. But the way that generally things work and from what we've heard, as well as through some of our conversations, is that it seems as though, on the Republican side, they have appointed Lauren Boebert, Marjorie Taylor Greene, and Paul Gosar to the House Oversight Committee. A committee that I have four years of seniority on and have been assigned to, whose new ranking member, so every committee, you kind of have the top Republican and the top Democrat. And if you are the top member of that party from the majority party, you become the chair. And if you are the top member of the minority party, you become the ranking member. And which is why control of the House, majority in the House is so important because if there's a Republican majority, all the chairs of committees are Republican. And if there's a Democratic majority, all the chairs are Democrats. But now the incoming ranking member will be Congressman Jamie Raskin of House Oversight in incredible human beings. I have served as Congressman Raskin's vice chair on the Civil Rights and Civil Liberties Subcommittee of House Oversight. Usually when you are an incumbent on that committee, you have first preference to decide if you stay on that committee. And so that's usually how it goes. My intention is to stay on the House Oversight Committee and provide full support to ranking member Raskin. And we're also going to have to kind of manage this clown car that's going on on the other side. And so that's what we're doing there. But in Oversight, what that means is that the chair determines and authorizes what hearings go on and what subject matters, you know, happen. So we can't necessarily, if they want to go after Hunter Biden's laptop and do this whole thing with it, we can't stop them, but we can embarrass them. So there's that. But I will say that in the past, we have been able to secure certain bipartisan hearings. Now, depending on the incoming chair or Congressman Comer, we will see what his appetite is to continue doing that. But I do want to say some of the past areas where we've been able to have bipartisan consensus, believe it or not. We held a hearing late last term on bipartisan solutions to cannabis reform. We, in the past, have held bipartisan hearings going after defense contractors and abuse of our public funds by defense contractors. So those of you who don't know, the Department of Defense is one of the only agencies that have not really been able to pass an audit. And so you're right, we shovel so much money there. I vote against the defense budget every year. And one major reason of that is because of this just complete lack of accountability. And we know if you've been a teacher in a school, every single penny you spend must be accounted for. Every single dollar in healthcare, in all of this. So when it comes to helping people, we are like this. But when it comes to our defense budget, I mean, the amount of waste and abuse and fraud is out of control. So in the past, that has been a point of bipartisan hearings. And I've been able, through my questioning, to really go after some of these contractors that have actually resulted in getting funds back from them. But it really depends on what they choose. Like if they decide to try to hold some bipartisan hearings, we might be able to get some progress on that. Our alternatives is to start sending letters directly to the Biden administration on some of these issues. And we've already started doing that with respect to some issues around immigration, defense, et cetera. Because, you know, whether it's a Democrat or a Republican, Oversight is necessary. And there are some things that, you know, we need to do regardless of party.
I'm sorry, the education system has been failing for the past 50 years. Under vocal orders. It's a systemic thing. It's not just, it's not just Yorkers, Canadians. It's a systemic thing for decades. What are we doing about that? It's people of color, it's Black people, it's poor people, poor women.
All right, we need to, if you could... Sir, if you have a question? Sir, if you have a question? All right, the folks are waiting in line. Sir, sir, if you have a question, you can jot it down. If you have a question, you can jot it down.
One more!
Sorry, Najee from the service. The next one is from Lee Ornati. The next one is from Lee Ornati. Lee Ornati?
It's all people white. It's all people white people. It's not okay. I'm sorry. It's all people white people. You can trust it all. Oh, isn't that okay?
So my question is...
One more, please! One more!
This hurts. You know what? Your heart is here because she's a liar.
All right, all right, bro. Whoa, whoa.
This is real speech. This is real speech right here, right here. Right here. This, you...
Okay, let's go.
You think this is nice? Or you think it's okay? Come on. Take it off. You know that's not right. You know that's not right.
All right, turn it off, five. Breathe.
I mean, this is democracy, folks. Like, that's just, this is what it is. It's the beauty.
So my question is about Rikers Island.
Yes.
Rikers Island is in your district, and eventually it has to be decommissioned.
Yes.
It's a long... About that. But then there's what's left. And I can see the real estate interests licking their chops to try to get in there. Now, my opinion is, any income that comes from Rikers Island should go to NYCHA. We should create some sort of a situation. Now, I know it's a city issue, but because it's your district and you have strong moral weight on your side, I think that's something that you could help make happen and would be big progress. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you. There are ways, that, you're right, you know it's largely a city and state issue, but there are some ways in which we've tried to engage the issue of Rikers. It is something that we take really seriously. To me, it is one of the sites of some of the worst human rights abuses in the United States of America, and it must be shut down. And so we've done a couple of things. One of the pieces of work that I did, that we spent a lot of effort on later last year, was using the House Oversight Committee to conduct a thorough study and assessment of the situation of Rikers and saying, you know, the city has largely lost control of the situation. The state has not presented a plan on the situation. So, you know, it's time for us to get involved if a solution has not been made yet. And so we actually have been... Some of the, some of like kind of the federal, it's almost like this conversation about receivership, federal receivership. And we are supportive of that jurisdiction moving to federal receivership if we believe that it can accelerate the shutdown of Rikers. Now, I think there's also this other conversation that if we have to shut down Rikers, then we need to build like tons and tons of other jails. But I don't necessarily think that that's true. Because what we've seen is that we've actually had remarkable reductions in incarcerated individuals. Remember, Rikers is not a prison. This is a place of pre-trial detention. And so 80% of Rikers have not been found guilty of a crime. And so we are keeping people there who are only, at most, when you have someone who's in jail for pre-trial detention, they are not supposed to be their mom. But due to the injustices of our system, people are being trapped there for weeks, months, years on end. And it is destroying lives. It is destroying families. And there is very little thought given to the fact that it is destabilizing for an entire... And they have a job, and whatever happens on Saturday, or whatever it may be, you end up in pre-trial detention. It's one thing if you're there for one, two days. If you are there a week, you lose your job. If you're there a month, you lose your housing. Because the government is not doing its job in fulfilling our obligation to a free, fair, and swift right to trial. And so I personally believe, I am fully supportive of the shutdown of Rikers. I believe that you are correct. Wherever there is land to claim in New York City, there's going to be speculators and people that are trying to pounce on that. We have worked... ...picked up at the city level called actually Renewable Rikers. And using it as a, for anything that is built there to also have an enormous amount of renewable energy development that also happens for our city. There's also a lot of land assessment that needs to happen. I believe that there's a great deal of evidence that a lot of that land is actually quite toxic and could potentially be a fun site, either a super fun site or something similar to that. And so I also want to make sure that it is safe. And that if there's any housing there, that that housing is safe. And so I think there's some assessment that needs to happen about the safety of that future. But if it's not safe to live on, it can be safe for the production of solar energy, which can go back to subsidizing a lot of our energy bills here in the immediate area. But thank you. And I think that's all for our Q and A. Right, Najee? All right. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Una ley?
Una ley de migración, hace 40 años. No, necesito hablar. Necesito escucharte. Yo vine, yo vine para hacer una pregunta.
Okay. Está bien, está bien. Si, por favor, Norma, sí.
Hace 40 años que no hay una ley de aminía en este país. Okay? Todavía no hay una ley de aminía en este país. Y el partido de Móndata mandó 100 millones de dólares a Nazis en Ucrania, y esta señora votó para eso. En este país necesitamos un tercer partido al estilo de Ángel Méndez y Morey en Chile. El partido de Móndata no está haciendo nada con nosotros. Estamos defensorando Independiente porque el partido de Móndata no hace nada con nosotros. Ya va siendo, ya va siendo. No, señora, no.
Thank you too, sir. De acuerdo. Gracias, señora. Gracias.
Thank you so much to our constituents for joining us this evening and to River Bay for hosting us. Thank you, but to our women, for coming on with happy, for being with today. Thank you to our services, Mark Whitehead, Jessica Lee, Brenda Leon, Alvaro Ortiz Vasquez, as well as transmission services by Cara Camacho and Wendy Moore. You can always contact our office by calling 718-662-5970. First woman, please form a line down the middle of the room. Please keep your masks on. Our staff can assist with photos that make your exit on stage right. Thank you and have a good evening. Thank you and have a good evening.
What can take?
I'm, I'm just going to ask her about
Yeah, I think that's a more interesting question. Really have time to answer anyway. Yeah. I, I'm sure you're interested. Because now I'm going to meet all the people unfortunately. Um, you're, you're welcome to stay around until she's done and she might be able to take a question on her way to the car. Um, but it'll really sort of depend on, yeah, how long this takes and how long it runs. You can definitely try.
Okay.
Yeah. She generally, they talk to people on this line, there's a way. Oh, I'm Lauren. Yeah.
Okay, so you were just talking about, my name is Jermaine, I'm a resident of Co-op City. Uh huh. This is Justin, he's also a resident of Co-op City. Um, we're young, I'm twenty-six, he's eighteen.
Yeah.
Um, and the biggest thing for us is, we don't need enough, not to say we love, we love Representative AOC, but we need representatives that are going to come and speak for us too. Not just speak for the fifty-five and above, or the thirty-five and above. Because I can walk outside right now, out of my house, and have to fear for there not being enough access. Like he would talk about when we were on the line, not there being enough access. Because we didn't even know, we live here, I live two minutes away from here. And I knew nothing about this event. So, there's, the access of what we should, what we're allowed to have versus what they want us to have in our own community, kinda is slim to none. And I want to just ask her, can you come and be the representative for the young people? We don't need, the seniors don't need another representative, let's be completely honest. Seniors don't need another representative, the young people need a representative. We need someone that is going to speak for us, that's it. Literally, somebody that's going to say, I want to speak for you.
What are the top issues that, that you would like her to take off for younger people?
We need centers, not only centers, but we need resources. Resources for young black men and women, Latino, Afro, whatever your race may be. A literal safe haven where it's not a sign up, where it's literally funded by the government. You can go in, you get mental health services, you could get physical, physical therapy. We need those things where our community is not struggling to pay fifty dollars a month, thirty dollars a month to get these types of resources.
I think another thing is also the idea that, right? And I talked, you know, I'm a college student, I'm a freshman in college in Pennsylvania. And it's like, there, right there, China, tell all the college kids to sign up. Pennsylvania's a slink state, we need young people to vote. Talk about how the mid, midterms last year, there was a red wave that was projected and that didn't happen because people our which stopped the huge red wave. So even though, yes, conservatives might have the House, Republicans might have the House, it's a slim majority because people our age voted. Yet all we want is our issues to be taken into consideration. When I look at how public education and access isn't valued, how mental health isn't valued, that's a problem. And like what Jermaine said, I go to Co-op City and I look here, look, how many people here live in our community? How many people here are young people? How many people even around AOC's age who are here? Most people here are senior citizens. And most things that happen in Co-op City and the Northeast Bronx are tailored to people over the age of sixty-five. And that's not to say there's not a demographic there that needs help.
But that's not where the problem is, and that's what he's saying.
And what I'm saying is when I see, when I go to college and I see in my own communities, people thirteen, fourteen years old are shot and killed in my own community? Something, these are people's grandkids. The same older people who don't really prioritize you. And that's all we're saying, we want everyone to get love. But if you want to stop the systemic violence in our communities, and particularly black and brown communities, it starts with youth access. And showing kids that there's more to life than the street. Because that's all they see, because no one cares about what they're doing with education, what hobbies they're into, things like that. And if they do, it's exclusive, then it's hard to afford, so that's what we are here for.
And the biggest thing is, in order for us to become old, you gotta be young first. And we have so many people that, once they get older, they won't be able to say, I've had a childhood that was safe. My biggest thing is, can we have younger kids have a safe childhood? How can we make school safer? How can we make where our kids hang out at safer? So where they don't have to feel like, if I'm riding the train two stops, I might get stabbed before I can even get to my destination. Or somebody's going to be following me from school to my home. How can I make these things safe? So that's really what it is. But like you said, there are tons of older people here, the older generation here. And the younger generation has not known anything about this event. We need more events like this. I will say that, um, one Q and A is not going to do it. One two-hour Q and A is not going to create a solution or even spark a solution because there are so many other voices that need to be heard within our community.
What, what kind of format do you think would work for younger people in your community?
I think for younger people in our camp, we just need to know that our representatives are there for us. Not only that, but let us know when our representative is coming, when can we speak to them? In, in forums like this, because we don't have a lot of forums like this for young people.
And also advertising it, letting people know.
Right.
And there's other, I think before, traditionally you might see things on the news, on a newspaper, or flyers, but we're in a digital age. These things need to be pushed and prioritized on social media, because that has such a huge effect. Is what people under the age of thirty are talking about. Every trend you see on Facebook or Instagram is what people our age are talking about. So if we're going to talk about what we see, we don't see things about what's happening in our community, we don't see that there's an opportunity to have our voice heard in the community?
Right.
We're not going to go, we're not going to know. And I know so many people right now, because I posted, yo, I'm in Co-op City and AOC is here, they're like, I wish.
A lot of people think that AOC has a, a pretty big presence on social media, right?
Yeah, she does.
So, so what's the dis looking for information on social media, how is that not happening?
I think that to answer your question, what it is, is that, AOC, the redistricting thing has been dead. So a lot of people in our community still think that we have Jamal Bowman as our congressman.
Okay.
When we, she, when the redistricting has happened already, and we have a new congresswoman. So, the only way that we, we do that is if we hit the ground running. We have to hit the ground running with bringing the representative doing events that people can learn and grow, not only.
In here, right, in Co-op City? Um, so do you think that more younger people
I think that, but also, I've got to make sure that her office, but also the community of Co-op City prioritizes Co-op City do. They can push that and advertise that, so that's something we hope to see.
What, what would you like to see them do?
I would like to see them do that, so like it's not just
No, but what, what do you want, you're saying that you would also like to see action from more, out of more local level, right? So like what kind of access?
Them hearing our voices and them fostering community of young I grew up a lot that Jermaine was talking about, and we targeted towards senior okay, we're not really cared about here, we're not a priority here. So when you look at how this community is getting older and aged, that's all we're saying, so.
Alright, well, thank you, thank you for commenting. Yeah, let me give you my information.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
I do a lot of stuff in Co-op City too.
Yeah?
A lot of stuff.
You mean like social media?
Events, um, social media, political events, I work for the Congress.
And I appreciate the library to do it.
Thank you.
Okay. No. Okay, alright, so you were here at the, you came
I'm Zackon Tune Day, I am a graduate student at Millman School of Public Health. I'm interested in grassroots activism.
Okay.
Um, I came to this event to learn about, you know, some of the current events that are currently happening in the community. And how, um, you know, she's been of service, how the community put my best foot forward this year as an advocate. Um, some of the things that I'm interested in is youth empowerment, education, um, you know, children's rights, um, um, urban health. So our health is a human right. Um, for the past two years, I've been working out with a COVID-19 response here in New York City. And now that, you know, the brunt of the pandemic is over, I'm looking to see exactly what the community needs and how we can help out. So, uh, this has been a good opportunity to learn from our fellow community members on things that are going on right now. And, you know, the agenda for the 2023 year, what are we fighting for? Probably want to see.
Did you get a sense, a sense of what the top issues are? Come away from this event with?
Yes, yes and no. Yes, in the sense that, um, it was reaffirmed that, you know, a lot of the people here are very interested in youth education. You know, really empowering the youth and making sure that the, the future generation are full of strong leaders and are very equipped to, you know, handle the real world. You know, facing economic pressures, you know, there's and services, so very much interested in hearing from the community all come together to issues. It's been really good.
Right, yeah, the, uh, the people that I was just talking to before you, um, were young people. And they were talking about the concerns of young people and how they feel that those are not being addressed in this community enough. And there's a lot of communication with younger people. Are there, are there you're a little bit of a graduate student, so do you have any thoughts or specifics of advocacy that you would like to see the Congresswoman support in, in that effort to
So, that is a very interesting question. I am from AOC's native neighborhood of Parkchester, uh, in the Bronx. I'm very much interested in seeing more community investments. Um, we're seeing a lot of shuttered businesses in the Parkchester neighborhood. I wanted terms of, um, you know, small businesses and also as well as, you know, sorry. And also as well as a community center. We have a big empty lot on the corner of Union Port and Tremont that's been abandoned and vacant for the past, I believe, maybe five or six years. And, you know, there's been a lot of rumors and buzzing in the neighborhood about what might potentially go there. We're seeing that the L I double R is doing an extension as well in the area, and there's some economic development in the area. But we want to see something that actually comes back to the community. So in terms of advocacy, things that I would actually like to see, um, I'd like to see more community investment in, um, you know, outreach activities that empowers children outside of school. Um, it's important for schools to be invested in as well, but extracurricular, curricular activities to keep our youth out of the streets and empowered. Uh, we would like to see more community investments in arts, education, the music, a lot of the, a lot of things of those sorts. That's all I got. Thank you so much. Of course.
She still give me two dollars for pap.
What's your YouTube?
Yeah, man.
Pour montrer à mes camarades qu'il faut venir à ces événements américains. Voilà ce que je fais.
I don't even, I don't even know for one trick or other.
Seriously.
Like, at least do it where you had a bunch of white swag.
Seventy-five cents short of that.
Do you have questions, or just speak?
Uh, why did you come today?
I mean, I, I like her. I like what she's doing. You know, I, I mean, I live in this district too, so that's cool. Trying to get more involved in, in politics and whatnot, because, you know, it's important. Hey, yeah, I like what she, I like what she's doing. I mean, as you could see by the event and whatnot, like, she definitely draws detractors, I guess. I feel like, you know, I think she's a beacon of hope for a lot of people, and that so people can kind of put their own personal frustrations and anger on her, but, you know, it's like, you gotta, you gotta support the people that are supporting you, you feel me? Or it's just a little, you know what I mean? People want the whole world to change in one day, but it doesn't really go like that, you know? And it's like, I, I get a genuine vibe from her, and I think she's trying, so, you know, it's cool to, um, step out and support that.
To see her address.
Big issues?
Yeah. Like, what's top of the list for you?
For me personally, I mean, whatever, immigration is a big thing for me, you know, um-
In what, in what way?
My parents are immigrants, um, and, you know, I, I would love if, if everybody who, you know, came here could at least have a way of getting their papers, you know what I mean? My, my, I know people, I work with people, my family, they come here, they work, and they work, and they work, and it's like, you know what I mean? It's cheap labor. It's not fair. They should have access to the same, you know, you come to this country, you work, you work hard, you know, construction workers, this and that, they should all have an opportunity to, get their papers, get access to the same benefits, social security, you know, whatever healthcare they can get in the meantime, you know? So that's one of the things that's important to me. Uh, I mean, you know, reproductive justice and all that is very important, um, you know, social justice and the whole, um, you know, reform, reforms of prisons and, um, I mean, we've been doing good on the, on the whole weed thing, so that's cool, you know, decriminalization of, um, cannabis, but decriminalization of all drugs would be cool, and more support for addicts, um, more support for the homeless, uh, um, housing in New York is a really big, uh, something that's very important for me, um, and, uh, I, I, you know, I think that-
Do you have any thoughts on how you'd like to see her address, or local politicians even, address the housing issue? There, people have a lot of different ideas on-
Yeah, I mean, I'm really, I'm not an expert by any means. What I've read is that, um, shortage is a big thing as to why rent in New York is so, um, expensive, because there are more jobs than there are, um, apartments or houses for people to live in. So the people in the higher strata of money-making get houses, whereas other people don't. Um, so I don't know, I mean, but I, it's a really complicated issue. So I, I can't, I, I think, so from whatever, whatever I've read, I think, you know, obviously building more would help, you know what I mean? But that's a whole other complicated thing. Building is complicated. People don't like construction, and you need to do it safely, too, and it's just like, the way I see it, it's like a web. You gotta take things off from, you know what I mean? You can't, you can't improve housing without also improving, you know, like, workers' rights, and improving this, and improving that, so, I don't know. I don't know. It would be nice to see more, just more support for homeless people and whatnot. I, I think at the end of the day, like, funding has to be there, you know what I mean? Um, and it's like, I don't know. I, I don't know enough about anything to say what specific things politicians can or can't be doing. But it's like, at the end of the day, you know that if people really want to do something, it will get done. You could see it with the, um, with the vaccine, for example, you know? We got the vaccine in, like, record time, record this, record that, because everybody pushed for it. You know what I mean? If people pushed for issues, the way people push for vaccines, or, or things of that nature, or even, um, I remember learning about the, um, the space race, you know? The government put a lot of funding, a lot of money, a lot of energy to that, and the things happen, you know what I mean? At the end of the day, from what I've seen right now, it's, you know, it's really more- smaller grassroots, you know, type of organizations that are really trying to, like, fight this. You can't really, you need money behind things, essentially. Yeah.
Okay. Well, thanks for, for coming.
No problem. Sure.
Thank you very much.
Did you say a few words?
Yes.
Why, why did you come up to this on today? What are your big issues?
I like to say, Joe was new, Ingle was, Joe was new, Ingle was better, but I guess, I mean, Ingle, Joe was new, Ellie was known, but Alexandria just got a subtle for being better. I like her. She's a go-getter. She's a fighter. I like the two predecessors in this district, but she is a go-getter. I mean, she's a go-getter. From day one, she's been a go-getter, and that's what I like. Second-guess herself, pay any attention to what people are saying. She's just a go-getter, and I mean, she goes, she brings it home. She brings the bacon home.
What, what are the big successes that have impressed you that she's had?
She's taking the concerns of her constituents to the desk. She's taking them right into the chamber. I've seen her on television, what they're blasting her for. She's really taking in what people want to see, changes people want to see. She's taking it in, she's forcing it. Whether it gets voted in, no one knows, but she takes it there. Brings it. She takes it there. That's what I like. She takes the concerns there.
Are there, are, are there some, um, top of the list concerns for you that you'd like to see her support in that way?
More pension money for teachers. More social security for the social security. Yeah, she's, she's, she really takes the, the issues and- She gets them to the floor. It's not, she only gets one vote, but she really takes them to the floor, and I like that. She has, she's known for taking it to the floor. I like that. And it's a good thing she was not a career politician. She just thought about running once, I think. She went out, she got it, she succeeded. It's, oof, her first win. I couldn't believe it, but she pulled it off. She- That I know very well. She replaced a good person, and now she's replacing a even better person. And she is not taking it lying down. She's a go-getter. She really goes and get it.
So you're, you're here in Co-op City?
Yes, I live here in Co-op City.
And you're happy to see her office?
Oh, yes. I'm so glad that she came from Parkchester. I'm glad her district expanded up. So we have her for what, ten years now? Before they vote again and push it back out? I think it's- The census, I think, every time we take the census every ten years, it pushes out from Long Island and then up to Westchester, then it pushes back down. She'll probably go back to Parkchester and parts of Queens and duh-duh-duh-duh-duh. But anyway, as long as she's in this district, I'm so happy. She's a go-getter. She really brings it out. Thank you. This is gonna be with, with TV? You too.
Thanks, please do.
NYC, for yourself.
Okay, I can keep this?
Okay, thank you.
I didn't see anybody else here for you.
Um, we're losing our teenagers, and that's why I came out today, because, um, teens are dying every single day in the Bronx. And she's feisty enough to be able to get something done for us, you know, that's what I believe. So I figured I'd come and ask her. So I didn't get to raise my hand, but I did ask her, I'm communications director, um, for some programs or some gang intervention, what can we do to help preserve the next generation here in the Bronx? Because, uh, it's really scary.
Do you think that it's, uh, different than it used to be? You're in Co-op City or something, so, um, have you been here for a while?
I went to high school here.
Okay, so you've seen it over time?
Yeah.
Do you think that things have changed in recent years?
It's not even in Co-op City where the problem is. It's in the South Bronx, it's in the Fordham area. There's a lot of gang activity there. We don't have that here in Co-op City. We have, um, our share of minor crimes, you know, car vandalism, car theft, things like that. But my concern is- about fourteen-year-olds being shot in the head. That, you know, what is going, what's going on? It's a war zone.
What are the kinds of, um, policies, and it's probably, you're talking about, for supporting local policies? Um, what, what are the kinds of policies that you'd like to see her support?
I'd like to see her get some money to fund some programs for middle-aged students to develop their own interests, so they don't have to be swept up into gangs because they don't have anything else to do, or, you know? I don't really know how it works, but I figure if they're busy enough, you know, maybe they won't become, well, I get emotional talking about this, but this is- It, this, this is why I'm, I'm heartbroken. I'm heartbroken. All of this death in the Bronx. All this violence in the Bronx, you know? The policies that she could support would involve funding gang intervention programs.
She, she did talk a little bit about that?
I came a little late.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, well, you can watch the, uh, the full thing on my livestream, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you can catch the part you missed. Uh, she, she did talk, uh, a little bit about that, about, um, interest programs and, you know, you can support that.
Oh, good. So she started off with that. Oh, good. I knew she'd be interested. I knew it. That's why I came. Yeah, she's, there's something about her that, that just clicks for me. She's, I don't know, she's feisty. She gets things done.
That's what that guy said.
Yeah.
Do you think, I mean, it sounds like you've lived in the Bronx your whole life?
Nope. I've lived in LA, I've lived in Charlotte, I've lived in Atlanta. It's home, mhm.
Okay, so, what has happened to, in recent years that, that you're seeing this problem, this overturning with young kids?
Well, I just moved back from LA a year ago. I don't really know.
So you were surprised by it?
Shocked.
To find it here, yeah.
Yeah, I'm surprised. Yeah. They would probably know. I can ask them. I don't know. I don't know, but since I've been back, that's what I hear most every day. Mistaken identity, you know, somebody just got randomly shot, an eleven-year-old girl got randomly killed. Somebody on a scooter just shooting at someone else. What the hell is going on down there? What is going on, and why is it going- -being solved? You're not hearing that, these murders are being solved. Well, one, one was solved not too long ago. The young man who was, um, stabbed to death. The, um, bodega murder, I think they called it. Those four, they were just sentenced just last week.
So are you saying that you think there's also issues with law enforcement or policing, or the system, legal system?
No. As a lawyer, I'm not gonna say that. No, I think the police are doing a wonderful job. I'm never gonna say that, no. I just don't see the murders being solved, you know? If an eleven-year-old gets shot, we wanna know that somebody was, I wanna know, you know? I'm sure I'm not the only one. Okay, yeah. Alright. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds like that, that was really the main issue for you. I was gonna ask you if you had any other big issues that you want-
That's my big issue. Um, worried about the immigration problem, too, you know? They're welcome here. Don't give them sandwiches to eat, you know? If they wanna cook in their rooms, it's just a hot plate, you know? It's not gonna burn the building down. If you're worried about burning buildings down, there was a building in the Bronx last January, all those children that died, that building was out of code. Terribly out of code, and reported repeatedly. That's what you worry about, not the immigrants who wanna have their own food, you know? If you're far away from home, you should be able to have your own food, you know? Some small bit of comfort, you know? Taking away their hot plates and stuff like that, that's just too much. You know, that's overruling, you know? Sometimes people just govern too much, you know? Just let them have some peace. Have some peace. Because if you ask me, America did a job on some of those countries in Central, in Central, Central America back in the eighties, you know? And that never comes up. Never comes up, but we aren't to blame for a lot of that, you know? So of course they're gonna come over here now. Where else would they go? Their country's a mess. It's war-torn. It's not their food. Yeah, so, let them use their hot plates.
Okay, with that, thank you for talking with me. Let me give you my-
Sure.
Okay, so you're waiting to speak with her for a minute? Why did, why did you come up to this event?
I have been a AOC fan since the beginning. I'm not quite as progressive as the Squad in AOC and especially Bowman. I was not a big fan of Bowman, and I was very happy. Except for the fact that when we were in CD-16, we were 60% black, 30% Spanish, 10% other. Now we moved to AOC. Now it's 60% Spanish, 30% black, and I don't know what, or whatever. I don't really know. I didn't look it up. You know, so in support of my community, I was not thrilled that we lost Bowman. But I was thrilled we lost Bowman because I don't like him. I came, I've been a fan. I've been a supporter. You know, five bucks a month, you know, since before she became our person. And now that she's our person, I'll continue doing that five bucks a month. Um, I think she does a wonderful job of explaining. She did like a kindergarten version that was not talking down.
I'll, I'll let you go, go ahead.
Yeah, you can go ahead. I mean, sure. But you should interview her because she's our president, our board president.
Oh, is that one right here?
Sonia Feliciano.
Okay, sure. I'd love to do that.
Sonia, S-O-N-I-A, Feliciano.
Okay.
I'm Mary. Mary Pearson. I used to be on the board. I got kicked to the curb. I didn't win last year. But I'm still very involved in the community. And she comes with great, great ideas. She comes with a true feeling that the little guy has gotten such a bad shake that no matter if you're making 20,000 more than me, we should all get what we need, you know? And I really like that. I'm a, you know, flaming liberal from way back and an agent, agent hippie. So I like her viewpoint. Nobody can know everything, and she doesn't know some of the stuff that is plague of Co-op City. Do you live there?
I, I'm farther...
Oh, you live farther west? You know, like, we cannot go electric without major investment in changing our power plant. Because we use fuel. We use fuel only when Con Ed says, "We need all your gas. Switch to fuel." Right? But we're mostly natural gas. You know, of course we gotta get rid of this stuff. Of course we have to have wind and, to me, geothermal's the way to go. Hydrogen, you need fuel to make hydrogen. You know, so you really need those renewables. I've always been a big anti-nuclear reactor, you know? So I really like, you know, the, the cheap, efficient, no byproducts of the, of the renewables, the sun, wind, water, you know, that kinda stuff. She's really heavy on going electric. We cannot do that without a billion dollars. Not even a billion, maybe multi-billion dollars to change our electrical system. Because even when one building goes out with the, the gas line, everyone was given like a hot plate like they are doing now. My friend had to change her dinner hour because that extra hot plate in everyone's apartment blew the, blew the circuit breakers. So we can't, we are not in a position to go electric unless we get an incredible infusion of innovation and cash. With as, as little siphoning off the money from the profiteers, which is always gonna be. So, thank you. So you have a YouTube channel about what?
It's, I'm just reporting on this live streaming.
Oh, so you're following, uh, I, I channel?
It's just, it's a reporting channel, so if you go to YouTube and you open up that, that's for yourself. My channel.
It's your channel.
If you, if you subscribe, you'll, you'll, you'll help build my channel and then one day just keep advertising. Up to you.
Good evening. My name is Sonia Feliciano. I'm the board president of the RIVB, RIVB board. And basically, we're looking for some support in some federal funding. Because we, our interest has been for many, many years to open up a youth center. We have the building. We just need additional funding for capital construction and other things to be able to bring that center to fruition. So it's, it's a matter of just getting our legislative officials together. With her director to be able to talk about what they can do to help us in terms of funding for this capital project that we're trying to get off the ground.
And so you're optimistic that she'll be able to help you?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Oh, gracious. Thank you.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
I think it's a constituent.
Okay.
I'd love to ask personal questions.
Yeah, you know, we did the gaggle already. Um, so we probably won't have any more time for personal questions tonight. I apologize. Uh, constituent questions. Constituent questions, you're totally welcome to approach us as a constituent. I think it might feel a little bit more that way to her if it wasn't recorded. So, you know, I, you know, it's a... You have, you absolutely can. I think there... You absolutely can. My feeling is that my colleagues can tell you that we're trying to constitute questions a lot, so you can get on, but, you know, that's just like... Yeah, sure. Come on, guys. Hi, how's it going? Good to see you.
Yeah, good to see you again.
Yeah, absolutely. Sorry. We're going this way? Okay, cool. Sorry, we're going this way.
I, I saw the email you sent out the other day about bad faith criticism and...
Hmm, yeah, yeah.
Now you're, you're appearing fit here as a congressperson.
Yeah.
How do you balance being an effective, to do a disruptor that many of your quarters, you know, want to see of a, of a corrupt status quo in Washington?
In some ways, it's one of the toughest aspects of, of the job. Because it's really about the daily discipline and figuring out. There are some times when you, when you... And sometimes the best thing to do is to disrupt and is to break from things. But sometimes the best thing to do for a... You can navigate what, what almost looks like an inevitable outcome, right? Like, they have the votes with Republican and conservative Democrats combined and it's insurmountable. Then how do we navigate that situation? Um, and, you know, try to just conserve our resources and energy to fight another day. It's really, really, it's a really hard thing to do because all these situations come up and they're all different. And it's like trying to make that decision and figuring out which, which battles are the ones that you fight and which ones are the ones that you, you just kind of have to live another day on is, it's tough. It's not easy. It's really not easy.
Thank you so much. We really do have to... She's really gonna go. I'm sorry. I totally understand.